Hello, everyone. We'd like to reconvene. The Anaheim City Council meeting back to order. Clerk, can you please call roll?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Diaz.
Here.
Councilmember Leon.
Present.
Mayor Protem Gubakala.
Here.
Councilmember Vessel.
Here.
Councilmember Meeks.
Here.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Here.
Mayor Aiken.
Here.
As the record show, we have seven members present.
Thank you very much. So the first item on our agenda is a workshop on the Brookhurst Corridor Study. City Manager, could you please introduce the workshop? Just as for clarity, we are going to, after the workshop, have questions by council. We will be having public comment after the workshop.
I'd ask for a staff report from Director Ramirez, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. I'm joined today by Economic Development Analyst Nick Gomez and our consultants from DUDEC, Ms. Catherine Sais and Mr. Gurav Suri Staba. By way of background, on August 23rd, 2022, the City Council voted to designate a portion of the Brookhurst Corridor as a Little Arabia District. That same evening, the City Council also directed staff to commission a study that would research the needs of the local community, engage all stakeholders, business patrons, and residents for the purpose of analyzing various district options for the corridor, as well as identify recommendations for improvements and possible funding sources. Staff issued an RFQ-RFP. A multi-departmental team selected DUDEC as a top firm based on their experience, team qualifications, community outreach plans, and references. The purpose of the study was to complete a comprehensive analysis, visioning, and conduct community engagement for the enhancement of the three-and-a-half-mile Brookhurst Corridor. The study is meant to facilitate the long-term success and cultural identity of the corridor. DUDEC has met on a regular basis with a multi-departmental working group comprised of Public Works, Planning, Community Services, the City Manager's Office, and our office in Economic Development. DUDEC has also conducted robust community engagement to ensure that all stakeholders have had an opportunity to provide their input and participate in this process. With that, I will now turn it over to the DUDEC team for their presentation.
Thank you, Sajjo. Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, good afternoon. My name is Gorav Shrivastava. I'm with DUDEC, the consulting firm, working with the community, the staff, and yourselves on the Brookhurst Corridor Study. In advance, I want to apologize for the lack of appropriate sweaters on part of our team. But we will try and keep this festive and cheerful. I also wanted to quickly thank staff, members of the community, and members of the working group, many of who are here today for their collaborative efforts to helping us get to where we are today. What we have in mind for the next 35 minutes or so is to make a presentation that covers three topics broadly. We'll provide you an overview of the corridor. We'll provide you an overview of all the outreach efforts that underlie the process that have gotten us to today. And finally, the majority of the discussion will be around the recommendations and suggestions we are making to improve the corridor. Having said that, I will launch us into an overview of the corridor. So we were tasked by City Council in early 2023, we kicked off in April of 2023, to study the entirety of the Brookhurst Corridor. We had three specific objectives that we were tasked with. One, to analyze the three-and-a-half-mile segment of Brookhurst that exists within the city of Anaheim, from the 91 freeway on the north to Catella on the south, and to understand the issues that needed addressing. And these issues range from land use, from the streetscape, marketing, branding, operations. Many of those issues we have made recommendations for, and we will share those with you today. We were also tasked very specifically to ensure that our outreach efforts and process was comprehensive, that we made every effort to engage, solicit input, and consult with residents who lived along the corridor, property owners and businesses that operated on the corridor, as well as users of the corridor, whether they lived in the area or outside. A third task placed before us was specifically around Little Arabia. We were asked to analyze whether the designation that was adopted in August of 2022 had the appropriate boundaries and whether they needed modification, and also whether the definition of the designation as adopted in August 2022 needed any modifications. So across those three topics, what we will share with you today is our analysis, review, assessment, and our recommendations to council on how to proceed further. But first, just to remind ourselves about the corridor itself. So how we define Brookhurst Corridor is Brookhurst Street, the public right-of-way, and all the parcels that have frontage on Brookhurst Street from, within the city of Anaheim, so from the 91 freeway down south to Catella. We know that it is a notable commercial corridor of West Anaheim. It serves and traverses the communities of West Anaheim. It accommodates a mix of uses that range from residential neighborhoods to schools, to parks, commercial clusters, religious institutions, cultural institutions. It is home to significant landmarks and anchors like Lynbrook Bowl, Home Depot, State of Brothers, Ralph's. All these amenities along the corridor ensures that it plays a significant role in the daily lives of the community. We also know and have observed that the commercial activity that occurs along the corridor is concentrated in about a one-mile segment from Lincoln to Ball. This segment is where the majority of businesses, restaurants are located and operate. This segment is also home to Little Arabia. Little Arabia is a clustering of businesses and cultural institutions that self-identify as originating from Arabic communities of the Middle East and North Africa. I want to just stress the self-identification aspect of their identity because while it would be convenient to neatly box the identity of Little Arabia across ethnicities, we have observed that the act of self-identifying is a hybrid and fluid process. While generally, most of the businesses that self-identify as Arabic are originally from those areas of the world, but there are other businesses whose origins might be in Turkey or South Asia or Afghanistan who are not traditionally Arabic. But those businesses have co-opted and adopted that identity because of the fluid nature of the self-identifying nature of Little Arabia. From our research, we know that, starting in the 1980s, Arabic businesses established themselves, became successful, and for the last 30, 40 years have really evolved an identity and a clustering, a cultural, economic clustering that brings visitors from across Southern California, across the state. It is a very rare and unique clustering, ethocultural clustering. It is the only such clustering in Southern California and in the state of California, and there are only a handful across the nation that can identify as clustering of Arabic businesses and cultural institutions. As you well know, council recognized the significance and role of Little Arabia via the designation that it adopted last year. And all our analysis has confirmed and validated that the designation adopted was indeed the appropriate action. And as we go through the presentation, we'll suggest some nuances and tweaks to those How we have gotten to today has taken us about nine months. This diagram on the screen illustrates the three-step process that we used to arrive at the recommendations we're sharing today. Our initial phase dealt with analysis and discovery. Our second phase with alternatives, vetting ideas, and the final phase was refining those recommendations. Each of those, and we are today at the final step, where we're making our presentation to City Council. Each of these phases were punctuated with a community event, oftentimes multiple community events, which really formed the basis for the ideas that have been generated through this process. And I'll hand over to my colleague Kathy, just to walk us through what we did by way of engagement and how that played out.
Great, thank you, Gorav. Next, please. And one more, thank you. All right, so in terms of outreach and engagement, we recognize the need to have a multi-layered approach to speaking with the community. And this would give the corridors just rich diversity of people and uses. So this means that we solicited input across multiple interests, multiple cultures, multiple languages, formats, and locations, all with the goal of creating a transparent and inclusive process so that we could really listen to the community and better understand what their needs are, what their issues are, and what their aspirations are for Brookhurst. So over the course of nine months, we listened to residents, as well as businesses, property owners, community organizations, visitors, and consulted with various city staff departments. We did this across three public events, three focused stakeholder meetings, and one online survey. This was all in addition to constant noticing via a project website, social media posts, email blasts, and thousands of mailers that were sent to residents nearby. All of this resulted in the participation of about 300 community members, as well as stakeholders, whether they were in person or online, written or verbal. Next. So what did this look like? Well, we took it to the streets, literally, so Brookhurst Street. We focused our engagement on the corridor itself, making sure that we were accessible to the community by either being outside or at least directly on the corridor. Our first event was a walking tour, and despite the sweltering heat of that August morning, we had an amazing turnout and really positive feedback. Some folks said that they had never walked Brookhurst or experienced the corridor other than by car, so they really appreciated the format of the event and, as a result, provided us much richer input. Next. We met the community twice more at two open house events held last month in November, one on a Saturday morning and one on a Thursday evening at the Brookhurst Community Center. We shared preliminary ideas for the recommendations that we're going to share with you tonight, and again, mostly positive feedback, constructive conversations, all of which was incorporated into the final set of recommendations. Next. In addition, we also sought the focused input from a group of Brookhurst stakeholders. So these were residents, business and property owners, and community organizations. This allowed our team to test out some early ideas before sharing them with the broader public and even come up with new ones on the spot. We found that this was a really effective method because it allowed us to collaborate and have these one-on-one discussions with stakeholders in a brainstorming session. So all in all, we received and reviewed over 300 written comments, not inclusive of the many one-on-one conversations that our team had with members of the public. This was all over nine months. Next. All of which is to say that the community wants a better Brookhurst. So yes, to improving Brookhurst, yes, to beautifying it, cleaning it up, making it more vibrant, more safe, more walkable, and celebrating its uniqueness as home to multiple cultures, multiple uses, especially Little Arabia. A more in-depth elaboration of what we heard is provided in our final report, but the community's feedback alongside with our technical analysis really served as an essential and critical basis for the recommendations that Gorav will now introduce.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Kathy. Our recommendations that, as Kathy described, have emerged from input that we heard from the stakeholders and the community, but also from our own technical analysis, are broadly organized across 10 areas of interventions, 10 topics, and those are the ones that you see on the screen. Broadly, they address the entirety of issues that Brookhurst Corridor is facing and that were revealed to us either through our analysis or through input from the community. They touch on improvements to the public right-of-way, to the streetscape, safety measures for multimodal transportation, so automobiles, bicyclists, pedestrians. They also touch on land use and development regulations, on branding and marketing opportunities in the future, operations and management. And there are a couple of topics that specifically address Little Arabia, given the guidance we received from council to analyze the extent of the designation as well as the definition of the designation. So what we'll do is we will walk you through each of these 10 topics, lay out the issues and problems that we are trying to address, and what some of our recommendations are. Towards the end of this discussion, we have taken a stab at laying out a short-term and long-term action plan because we recognize that some of these improvements are easier to implement in the short term, and we want to make sure that the city can focus in on them, while others will take longer and are more complex and may be implemented over a longer timeframe. So the first topic that we wanted to address was the branding and identity of the entirety of Brookhurst Corridor. We know that Brookhurst and Little Arabia in particular are very strong regional destinations. They have built an identity for themselves over the last several decades. They draw visitors from across the region, and they also provide amenities and services to the local residents. What we heard from community members and what we also observed was that the corridor appears to be dated, that there is a disconnect between what the imagined sense of the corridor is versus the reality of the corridor is, and that there is no defined arrival experience or physical marker that will announce your presence in the corridor or the presence of the place that you think is the Brookhurst Corridor. So our recommendations to address some of these issues, number one, is to partner with Caltrans to introduce a Little Arabia freeway sign. We understand that this effort might already be underway, and this is likely to be implemented in the very short term. We are also recommending that the city make use of the existing streetlights and lampposts along the corridor to introduce a banner program that can make use of a branding strategy, not just for Little Arabia, for the entirety of the corridor, and to help address this gap between the physical reality of the place and what the place is imagined to be. We're also recommending that the city's public art program has a specific section that addresses Little Arabia and Brookhurst Corridor. As you're well aware, Little Arabia and Brookhurst now have a series of murals, the Hijabi Queens and other murals, and the recommendation is to facilitate a process where more of these murals can be incorporated and permitted. Another recommendation we are suggesting is around bilingual signage. Some of the things that we heard in our conversations with stakeholders was some businesses have signage that doesn't necessarily reveal their business to a wider audience. One approach would be to encourage bilingualism on signage, which would allow them to expand their market and the audience that they're serving. However, there is a caveat. The city can have no role in regulating the content of signs because that's a First Amendment issue. So if this is a preferred policy direction, the city would have to come up with a way to incentivize bilingualism without regulating it. Finally, we are suggesting and recommending that the city initiate a community-driven process to plan, design, and implement a defined arrival experience along Brookhurst. What this sketch is showing is potentially a gateway feature that would span across all of Brookhurst, but it doesn't have to be this necessarily. It could be a monument in a median or some kind of visual marker that would help people know when it is that they're in the corridor and specifically in Little Arabia. Our next topic of recommendations has to do with regional partnerships. What was very insightful to us in our analysis was understanding the role that Brookhurst Street plays outside of the city of Anaheim and in the entirety of Orange County. It has a run of 16 miles, Brookhurst Street. We know that Little Arabia is located within the segment of Anaheim, but further south are two very identifiable and successful cultural districts, Osce Coria Town and Little Saigon. What we learned through this analysis is that there is something unique about Brookhurst that makes it inviting to immigrant entrepreneurs and provides them the setting and ingredients for long-term success. What this is also helpful is in setting up a potentially inter-jurisdictional marketing relationships with the cities of Westminster and Garden Grove to market Brookhurst, the entirety of Brookhurst, as Orange County's multicultural corridor, because it certainly is playing that role today. And thinking beyond that, to lobby Orange County to establish a countywide network of cultural corridors, of which Brookhurst would be a pretty significant part. Related to these branding, marketing relationships and partnerships, our third set of recommendations addresses temporary events and celebrations. So what we know about Little Arabia in particular is that during the months of Ramadan, there are spontaneous, organic evening events where members of the community break their fast. And these are often communal events that are hosted in parking lots that function as night markets. One of our recommendations is for the city to put in place the regulatory framework that would facilitate and easily allow and permit such night markets to occur on parking lots and other private parcels. Another suggestion for Brookhurst is recognizing the diversity and multiculturalism of the corridor and how it is expressed uniquely through food. The one defining characteristic of Brookhurst is the variety of food that is available along the corridor. A suggestion that we would request the community and the city to consider is the idea of an annual Brookhurst Food Festival, which would, as the sketch shows, would potentially close Brookhurst to vehicular operations for a day, one day in a year, make it pedestrian only, and it functions as an outdoor farmer's market, food market, and its purpose is to let the neighbors, the residents, the broader community experience and enjoy the diversity of offerings that Brookhurst has. A fourth topic for our recommendations has to do with street beautification, which generally are improvements in the public right-of-way. What we've heard from members of the community throughout our engagement process has been that Brookhurst appears to be an aging corridor, a dated corridor, that it is in need of regular maintenance, in need of refresh. We know that improvements to Brookhurst's streetscape have been made north and south of the heart of the commercial corridor, where the freeway on-ramps and off-ramps are, and those improvements are related to freeway infrastructure, but none of those improvements have extended into the commercial heart of the corridor. We also know that for improvements to be made in the public realm, they need to be made within a cohesive, comprehensive framework so that they're not seen to be one-off, disconnected improvements that occur along the length of the corridor. So a critical suggestion in our mind is for the city to commence on the Brookhurst Street Master Plan that would address improvements in the public realm and the public right-of-way that touch on street furniture, on bus stops, on street lighting, on street trees, sidewalks. That we see as a critical first step as future improvements are implemented. Another recommendation we have specifically for the public right-of-way is to extend the current median that exists south of Ball to connect, to extend it all the way up to the 5 freeway to the north, because, as we know, medians help soften the pedestrian and driving experience of a street. They provide what are called pedestrian refuge islands. So for people who are unable to cross the entire street during one cycle, the median allows a place for them to safely stop in the middle of the street. It adds street trees, it adds vegetation, and generally improves the image of the street. And we think its absence between Lincoln and Ball, which is really the heart of the corridor, is very visible and felt. Our fifth broad area of intervention and recommendations has to do with pedestrian and bicycle safety. So from our walking tour, which I know many of us in the room were at that event, we learned that from a pedestrian perspective, it is difficult and unsafe for many pedestrians to cross the street. The street is too wide, the crossing time is not long enough, and the opportunities to cross the street are few and far between. We also learned and observed that the existing bicycle lane on Brookhurst is rarely used because it is unprotected, and it places bicyclists in an unsafe condition where they have to bicycle adjacent to high-speed, seven-lane traffic. So the bicyclists that do use Brookhurst are often on the sidewalk and not on the bicycle lane. So our recommendations to address both of these are pretty standard bicycle and pedestrian safety countermeasures, things like ensuring all pedestrian facilities, intersections, crosswalks are area-compliant, adding pedestrian countermeasures like bulb-outs at intersections that would narrow the distance of crosswalks, changing traffic signal timing to allow for a leading pedestrian interval, which is where the pedestrian walk sign appears first while the traffic sign is still red, so pedestrians have the comfort knowing that they have right-of-way to begin their crossing of the street. We're also suggesting certain locations where additional pedestrian crosswalks be introduced. These locations are existing intersections with an unmarked pedestrian crosswalk. Introducing marked pedestrian crossings will provide sense of safety, but also more opportunities for pedestrians to cross to the other side of the street. We're also suggesting new pedestrian lighting that may be of a decorative nature to align and be consistent with the overall identity of the district. And finally, we're looking at the existing bike lane and how it might be reconfigured so that there is physical separation between vehicular traffic and bicyclists. We understand that some of these recommendations will require a reexamination of Brookhurst's current designation as a major arterial, and I'm going to hand over to Kathy, who can walk us through what those conditions might be.
Thank you, Gorav. Okay, next. Okay, so moving on to number six. So the interventions that Gorav just mentioned are ones that help to make Brookhurst a place, a place for people, a place for activity, a place that can be considered a vibrant destination. So we recognize that the community's desire to have Brookhurst be a place conflicts with the corridor's function as a transportation facility. That is what the Orange County Transportation Agency, or OCTA, calls a major arterial highway. That is essentially a transportation corridor that is intentionally designed for the movement of automobiles, and in OCTA's mind, that is the second-highest classification in terms of vehicular movement. So Brookhurst's designation by OCTA as this seven-lane-wide major arterial highway is arguably the corridor's primary constraint against the corridor's primary constraint against reimagining Brookhurst as this place that the community wants. Next. But there is an opportunity, especially for the corridor's most vibrant cluster of commercial activity between Lincoln and Ball. And that is to imagine a place not simply to cut through and drive through, but to stop and stroll and shop and dine. So one of the recommendations that we have is to redesignate a portion of Brookhurst from a major arterial highway to a primary arterial highway. And this can be done either by considering a portion of Brookhurst to remain as a major arterial highway and just reallocate some of the roadway space to give back to the bike lane. Or, as you see in the sections in purple or blue, is to redesignate just a portion of Brookhurst. So this would be for the commercial heart and center, predominantly Little Arabia, where you could reconfigure the street from seven lanes to five lanes and then give you an opportunity to reallocate that road space for street parking, for landscaping, for trees, for sidewalk and outdoor dining. We believe this is a balance, this strikes a balance between being able to accommodate what the community envisions Brookhurst as a place, but also being realistic about the corridor's function as a transportation facility. The next intervention, number seven, is about not the roadway itself, but both for private property. So here, the recommendation is to provide Brookhurst the regulatory framework, so policies and regulations, that will allow the kinds of buildings and places and improvements that the community wants to see. And the simplest approach here is to work with what you already have, the now thirty-year-old Brookhurst Commercial Corridor Overlay Zone, which, by the way, doesn't address the now-changed nature of Brookhurst. So the multicultural significance, the presence of Little Arabia, it's just something that the overlay zone doesn't do. So in addition to updating the overlay zone, you can also look at the general plan to help cement Brookhurst as a destination and a place, and also maybe look at design guidelines to help provide supplemental guidance for the look and feel. Okay, number eight. So this was one of the direct tasks of the study, to look at Little Arabia specifically. In our analysis, we found, as Gaurav mentioned, that Little Arabia's influence extends beyond its current extents from Broadway to Ball. In fact, there are more than a hundred businesses that self-identify as Arab or Mina, so Middle Eastern or North African, along the entire Latham Brookhurst, from the ninety-one all the way down to Catella and even well beyond into the city of Garden Grove. But seventy percent of those businesses do lie between Broadway and Ball, the current extents of the district. So in an effort not to dilute, but to strengthen Little Arabia's identity and the public perception as the district, the recommendation here is to expand the extents just slightly south of Ball. This will capture a handful more commercial parcels, ultimately capturing ten more businesses, including the iconic Al-Daiabet Market, which opened in nineteen eighty-eight and is considered the first, or if not one of the first, Arab businesses along Brookhurst. An extension to capture this business, this market, would confirm and celebrate its specialty and significance in the Arab community. Another option would be to extend the district's designation northward up to Crescent. This would capture nineteen additional Arab businesses, including Karaleh, the Council on American Islamic Relations, another staple in the Arab community. However, this option recognizes the extents could risk diluting the district's identity since it would also include some non-associated stretch of homes between Catalina and Lincoln. So as a result, we recommend that maybe you reserve this extension down the line as a district continues to mature and grow, or when there is a formal cultural districts program in place, which I'll talk about in a little bit. Okay, number nine. So in tandem with the extents, we also looked at the designation of Little Arabia. So here, we recognize that the city of Anaheim does not have a formal program for designating cultural logistics in the city. But it's still very important and necessary to formalize, further formalize, Little Arabia in city policy. So as a first step, we recommend using the city's strategic plan, the current efforts right now, as an immediate opportunity to call out and recognize Little Arabia as a priority project. Such a step will help put into place critical next steps, like addressing Little Arabia in planning efforts like the general plan, zoning code, capital improvement projects, and other city programs. In addition, we recommend that the city of Anaheim establish a citywide cultural districts program. We've identified an example here, one in the city of San Francisco, where there could be a formal process that Little Arabia and other cultural districts can use to help establish their own visions, their own plans, their own strategies to implement improvements, enhance their identities, and market themselves. And lastly, number ten, operations and management. So the input that we received from the community is that Brookhurst needs help now. And while the city has done its best to provide services to the area, more is needed. A first step here is establishing a task force or a committee that can continue the momentum started by this study. Many of the Brookhurst working group members that we engaged have expressed interest and enthusiasm in continuing the work with the city to help improve the corridor, something that should be absolutely leveraged moving forward. And one final recommendation that we heard repeatedly from stakeholders was for the creation of a business improvement district, or a bid, which is a very efficient and self-motivated way of addressing the district's needs at the very local level. Enabled by state law, this can either be merchant-based or property-based, but in essence, will take time and will require both stakeholder approval and city council approval. All right, so that's our ten areas of intervention. As Gaurav mentioned, what we've done is we've taken a stab at putting together an action plan, knowing that we did cover a lot. But as you were listening, you were probably thinking that some of these can be done today and are actually probably critical in doing so in the near term. So some of those early wins can be the freeway sign for Little Arabia, most definitely cross-marketing with other tourists and transit agencies and other jurisdictions to elevate the visibility of Brookhurst. Celebrating Little Arabia at a night market or a food festival are easy wins as well. But other improvements like improvements to the roadway or even reconfiguring the cross-section, we understand that that definitely needs more consideration and study. But in the near term, as Gaurav mentioned, that Brookhurst Street Master Plan is an essential first step in establishing a comprehensive vision and plan for the future. Lastly, the development regulations. We also think this is an easy lift that can be started quickly so that it can then set in stage and help facilitate success in the long term. And then one more, not to lose momentum on Little Arabia or the corridor in general, but confirm the district's extents and the designation and initiate those first steps in establishing a task force and bid to facilitate the long-term success of Brookhurst. With that, I want to reiterate our thanks. It has been a great pleasure working with staff, with the community, with stakeholders. We definitely think that Brookhurst is a very special place, and we hope for its continued success. So there's obviously a lot more to cover. It's in the final report that you have, but we are here for questions, and I'll turn it back to Sergio.
Thank you, Catherine and Gaurav. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the consultant team for the thorough report and efforts required to conduct the study in the timeframe that was provided by staff. Additionally, I would like to specifically thank Public Works Director Rudy Imami, Planning Director Ted White, Community Services Directors Shawnee Larson Cash, Communications Manager Mike Lister, and our City Manager Jim Vanderpool, and all their staff who contributed to the study efforts. Additionally, I would like to thank the working group comprised of stakeholders from a broad range of backgrounds and interests that were assembled with various viewpoints that were received to help guide the study. A special thank you to Mr. Amin Nash, Mr. Patrick DiDodo, Ms. Beck Levine, Mr. Hussam Aliush, Mr. An Pham, Mr. Daryl Gamboa, Ms. Tracy Gamboa, Ms. Elaine Kraus, Mr. Nathan Zug, Ms. Nala Kalyali, and Mr. Rashad Aldaba. In addition, thank you to all the residents, businesses, and stakeholders who participated in the community walk-through, the meetings, and the survey. Over twenty-five thousand mailers were sent as part of this effort. Finally, I would like to thank Nick Gomez and Stephen Storer, who played a vital role in the efforts from my department. Council members, this concludes the presentation. We are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, and thank you to the... Thank you so much to the team for putting this together, and thank you so much to city staff for bringing forward this workshop. I think the designation was long overdue, and it's exciting to actually now start taking the next steps to turn that designation into a tangible reality for both the business owners and the residents in this area. I'd like to turn it over to my colleagues for comments or questions, starting with Council Member Leon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I just want to say thank you to Sergio and the entire economic development teams, as well as the DUDAC teams, for all of their efforts throughout the last, I think, nine months, you said, which have really flown by. So I really appreciate you. I want to say thank you to all of the working group members, all the residents, community members, business owners who took part in this study in any way, shape, or form. So I appreciate all of you and your feedback as we move forward on this study. I have a couple of questions, and then I have some comments. I just was wondering if you could repeat the total number of stakeholders that were engaged throughout this process? You brought it up at the beginning of the meeting.
It was, it ranged anywhere between eight and eleven. We had three meetings, but not all eleven stakeholders attended each of the three meetings.
And then in terms of total residents, businesses, business owners, community members, what was the total number approximately?
Over the course of the three public events and the one online survey, we reached about three hundred folks, or rather, three hundred folks engaged with us, of which seventy percent were residents.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And then one other question in terms of, I know that you mentioned Little Saigon as one of the comparisons, if you will, and a Little Saigon goes through, I believe, both Garden Grove and Westminster. In terms of signage, and I don't know if you know the answer to this, my understanding is that a lot of it is sort of locally, a lot of the focus is in Westminster, for example, versus throughout the entire length of that designation. Is that something that would be accurate to say?
Correct. So Little Saigon straddles the boundaries of the cities of Westminster and Garden Grove. But I believe the efforts moving forward, the designation and the district, are in the city of Westminster. And signage, I'm not sure how much signage they have today, but I know that as of early this year, the city is currently undergoing a process to implement a gateway sign across Bolso Avenue.
Okay, so it wouldn't be totally unheard of to say, let's say, if we expand that designation, but really focus on that sort of core that you've identified of businesses and other, like restaurants and things like that, it wouldn't be unheard of to look at an expanded designation with the focus of signage building off of that core and then moving on from there? Is that fair to say?
That is fair to say, Councilmember.
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate it. And I know that this is, I'm going to try to be brief, I'm really excited because this is in District Two. So again, I do thank you for all of your effort, for all the community members and businesses that came out and really played a huge role in these recommendations and the feedback. And I think one of my first conversations actually was with Patrick DiDodo from Cortina's, who I think was a member of the working group as well. Part of the first sort of step from that conversation was a desire to establish security, to make sure residents and visitors and business owners felt safe in the corridor. So I just want to give a shout out and say thank you to our police department, who was acting on our request from earlier this year to start installing overt cameras across Brookhurst to specifically try to reduce and deter crime and to make it safe, make it feel safe for residents, for businesses. And I know that's going to be an ongoing process, but I know that that's one key part of this. I'm excited, again, not just because it's in District Two, but really this creates a pathway, not just for delaying any improvements, but rather for focusing on a vibrant future for Little Arabia, for all of the businesses that are across Brookhurst, especially our residents that live in the immediate surrounding areas in West Anaheim, many of which use their voice for the first time to give feedback as to this study and what they want to see in the future. I also want to point out, I think it's really, it's a beauty, not just for our country, but here in our city of Anaheim, the fact that we are a proudly diverse community. And I'm probably paraphrasing, I think I've said it before, that diversity is our strength, not our weakness. And so it's exciting because we can recognize Limbrook Bowl for sixty-five years, and I'm excited because I think the sign is starting to be repaired, so I'm really looking forward to seeing that to completion. We can recognize Cortina's for sixty years, we can recognize Coz's for almost sixty years, Little Caboose, all these wide-ranging, multi-ethnic restaurants and businesses that are on Brookhurst that are in Little Arabia. We can recognize them for being staples in West Anaheim as much as we can recognize Le Mirage Pastries for being, I think the city manager sent this over to me, about being recognized on national TV for their ice cream that comes from a recipe from Damascus, which was first served five hundred years ago. So I really think that brighter days are definitely ahead for Little Arabia, for all the diverse small businesses. As was mentioned in the report, I think there's both short-term and long-term opportunities. I think in the short term, my office intends to continue working with the city manager's office, with city staff, to bring a lot of the short-term wins hopefully to fruition sooner versus later, focusing on, you know, not including but not limiting to the signage, the branding, the looking at the length of the official designation, and as well as capital improvements and projects that are going to be beneficial for everybody in West Anaheim that are much needed in the corridor. Obviously, that might be more in the midterm, long-term range, but having those conversations and sort of getting the ball rolling on that, as well as bringing that Caltrans application forward hopefully soon in the new year so that we can make sure people know that Little Arabia is here in Anaheim and West Anaheim. And I think, again, as you mentioned, some of the long-term recommendations, obviously being part of that strategic plan conversation that we're going to be having in the early year. And so to wrap this up, I appreciate my colleagues' patience, and I can appreciate the fact and the willingness, not just of our consultants, of our city staff, of the West Anaheim community, to really think outside the box, outside of the norm, especially in this area that for far too long has been a subject of conversations. And now hopefully we can shift that to not just conversations, but also actions in the new year. And I think there's a huge potential for a win for residents, for small businesses, for all of West Anaheim. I know Councilmember Diaz and I may not agree on policy a hundred percent of the time, but I think one of the things we do agree on is the fact that West Anaheim has a huge economic potential in our city. And so I know it's going to be, I know the District Two community has been patient as we've gone through this exercise. We're going to continue to not just ask for your patience, but also for your continued participation and collaboration as we move forward on some of these. And it's going to be a team effort to get this area to where we want it. But again, I think it's a good first step in the right direction. Again, appreciate the DUDAC team, Economic Development Team, for all of their efforts. And I'm looking forward to hearing my colleagues' thoughts and feedbacks, as well as collaborating to bring these much-needed improvements to fruition and to unlock that potential of Little Arabia and West Anaheim together. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Fessel?
Thank you. I'll be brief because my colleague pretty well-defined everything I think that all of us are going to say. I was one of two here back in August of 2022 that voted on this. One of the most important things for me was that we had, that we engaged the residents. I had no problem at all, I knew that we were going to engage the businesses, but I felt it was very, very important to engage the residents, many of whom didn't know what to expect, several who had come to me and said they would like to be part of the process, but they didn't know what that was going to be like. So the fact that we engaged over two hundred of the residents, thank you very, very much, DUDAC, was very important to me. I think it's already been stated eloquently about, you know, where we go from here. Yes, we needed a study. And I remember back in August of 22, a lot of residents and businesses said, why do we need a study? Let's just start now. And government takes, we have to have a study, folks. And I think what we've received from this is much more information than any of us probably expected, a lot of good information, a lot of good ideas that maybe individually we may not have come up with. So I'm very pleased that we're at this point. This is an important part, important point in the process, and we can move forward from here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Diaz?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank Gloria May. This was her baby. She had to push hard for this study. At the time, it was misinterpreted as she wanted this study to, not to do the designation as a Little Arabia, but I was completely wrong. This is the right approach here. Thank you, Gloria. So I'm going to go for the things that are more important to me. Little Arabia sign at I-5, that had to happen. Encourage bilingual signs, that's awesome, as long as we leave it up to the property owner to determine what's right for them. That's up to them. They know better than us how to market, how to market their own business. Now, put Brookhurst... better than us how to market, how to market their own business. Now, put brokers on the city public plans art, that needs to happen. A TIP banner program, that's awesome. This is the most important for me, at least in the next five years. Design a truthful, real experience. Something like Little Saigon, a big gateway that says, welcome to Little Arabia, Anaheim, that's had to happen. That's, that's essential to me. Nice one, big one. Establish cross-market arrangements. Position broker corridor as the OC Motile Cultural Corridor. We can market that as a tourist destination, all three of them. Little Arabia, Little Saigon, and Little Korea. Night market, food festival, those are essentials. A tribute beautification, that's, that has to be essential. Landscaping million, but that lot, million landscaping had to match Little Arabia. I envision the future like walking in Damascus or walking in Cairo. That had to match that type of vision. Pedestrian lights, safety measurements, bike lanes, going from mayor arterial to primary arterial, that's essential. I'm hoping Poliworks was consulting on that. And I think that gonna need an stadium or something, but I hope Poliworks was consulting with that before we put it in here, because it's, that's a major change there. Design guidelines, business improving districts. One of the questions that I have is, how, how are we going to pay for this? Well, definitely the public improvement has to be paid with taxpayers' dollars, but the, the, the marketing activities, things like that, had to be paid by the private sector. So that's why I like the, the business improving district portion of it. Had to be a partnership here. The night market and food festival, awesome idea, but it should be inclusive for all cultures. Why we want to limit that to the Ramadan? There, it should be during Ramadan, but why don't make it once a month or more often than that? I'm more inclusive. I, I agree with your recommendation. Definitely, we should expand it south of Ball Road. Now, extending to the north, it's kind of premature yet. It may be in the future. Finally, I invite anybody here to visit Little India in Artesia. You really feel like you're in India. It's, I go there often, and, and it's awesome. I encourage you to go there because that's the vision that I have for Little Korea, that you're going there and you feel like you're walking Damascus, so you're walking in, in Cairo. That's my vision. So thank you, staff, and this is awesome. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Meeks and then Mayor Protam Rubacaliva?
Thank you. I, I love the multicultural aspect of this and making sure that we include everyone. Was there any pushback in, in the Little Arabia designation? Were anybody looking for something that encompasses a brighter, broader cultural designation? And I don't know what that would be. I just don't want to feel like, you know, we're, we're excluding different cultures.
Yeah, Councilmember, thank you for the question. What we did hear on occasion from our stakeholders and members of the community was to emphasize the multicultural aspect of the corridor. And that was not necessarily resistance to the idea of Little Arabia, but to acknowledge that there is a broader identity to the corridor and not to lose sight of that. And in our set of recommendations and in our approach, I think we prioritize that. Like, we acknowledge the multicultural identity of Brookhurst as the enabling characteristic to allow Little Arabia to become successful. And not just Little Arabia, currently, in the future, there could be other ethnic districts that find the correct ingredients to locate and cluster along the corridor.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I, yeah, I wasn't around for the Little Arabia designation. Just want to make sure that it's the right one moving forward as we, you know, try to get signage out there and entry monuments and things. And one of the benefits, I think, that this corridor has that some other areas don't have is that we actually have some deep commercial properties on this corridor that allows onsite outdoor dining or, you know, street markets or night markets and things like that. And so to work with them, rather than trying to close off the street, because, you know, you mentioned once a year, I mean, it would be really great to have those types of things more often, and we could do it in one of the larger commercial properties and try to work with them to have some sort of night market and multicultural food and things with like permits and things like that, which would be really interesting. Street vendors with permits. But, so yeah, looking at. Also, you know, I, I think the idea of having a median, a landscape median, I think that makes a huge difference on corridors, and it creates a sense of place. Like, Councilmember Diaz said, you know, you can, you can create a feeling and a sense of place with different landscape designs. And so moving forward with something like that would be really great. And yeah, just investing more in the corridor, determining where and if signalized intersections need to be included, that would improve crossing and traffic in and out of businesses. Because once you do that landscape corridor, you're going to lose a lot of left-turn opportunities, and so you're going to have to have more signalized intersections at, at those points of entrance. So, and I'm, I'm not going to jump on board with re-designating it down to a, a primary, because I don't think any of the residents or businesses that you talk to out there said, I want to live with gridlock. So, so let's be careful if we jump forward on that one. That was all.
Thank you. Mayor Protam?
Thank you. So I, I won't repeat a lot of what was already said, so I'm just going to get into some of my questions. So the Business Improvement District is something that I'm really interested in looking at, because I think that really does provide viability, at least long-term, long-term sustainable viability for this community in terms of businesses. So did you look at any models similar to the Resort District where there's already an assessment that helps fund the infrastructure improvements and maintenance for that designated area?
Councilmember, thank you for the question. We, our research looks typically at Business Improvement Districts as California State law defines them, which is they're either merchant-based or property-based. And it is a complex process to get a Business Improvement District established, because the endpoint is 50% of your constituents, whether they're properties or member, or, or merchants, need to vote to self-assess themselves. To get to that 50% vote threshold, there needs to be a period of coalition building with a core group that can help mobilize canvas and outreach to everyone who's going to vote. Often, Business Improvement Districts fail. The, the formation process is not successful. So knowing what I know, there are consultants who help business districts establish Business Improvement Districts. So, and it is, it is not an unusual or a non-traditional process. And it's good to know that Anaheim has a precedent for such self-assessed districts. Brookhurst would have to go through its own process, and it may not be a short process.
Yeah. Can you just share for the people in the room, the already self-assessed district in our city?
All right. I'll defer to Sergio for that.
Yeah, yes, Mayor Protam. The self-assessed district is the resort-specific, Resort District, which is, was created for the improvement and also maintenance, but also the promotion of the resort area here in our city. So this would be second, this would, if, if, if the stakeholders wish to advance this idea, this would be the second special district in, in our city with, of that nature, that's geared towards commercial improvement, maintenance, security, and also promotion.
Perfect. And is that something that we will work with them to do? Because that's the one thing I am concerned about, is that we are going through this process, but there's not going to be a sustainable way to continue funding that corridor. And, and I think that's what makes the resort what it is today. The perception often is, is that the city is funding all of the improvements in the resort districts, but that's not the case. Those businesses are actually funding them, themselves through a self-assessment, non-tax through the city. So I was, I'm curious as to how we get that process started, whether it takes five, 10, 15 years. Could we do that sooner than later?
Definitely. Based on your council's direction and the input from the community, we, staff can, can engage in that process. And again, as the DUDAC team identified, typically the two models that there are, there's, I'm sorry, that are available would be the P-Bid or the Property-Based Improvement District, which are property owners assess themselves because of the increased property value that they will have from the, the district, or the Merchant-Based Business Improvement District, where the shopkeepers or shop, store owners assess themselves for promotion and security and, and other things. So I think those models, based on the boundaries, we could explore and then assess what that 50% threshold would look, look like, and what the stakeholders would like to see from that. But essentially, although the city would play a role, essentially, the stakeholders, that is led by the stakeholders, to your point.
Right. Because the TID, the ATID or TID, however you want to call it, that actually funds Visit Anaheim, which then markets the city and the Resort District. So in order for this corridor to also benefit from that, there would have to be some sort of infusion of funds into Visit Anaheim, whether the city decided to, let's just say, we as a council decided at some point to subsidize that for the first 10 years, as long as there was a long-term strategy. So I, I just want to make sure that that's something that we're looking at, because we are a city of, you know, 50 square miles, and my district also is a Latino-dominated district. And, and so I, I just want to make sure to, Councilmember Meeks's question, is this designation the one that is, you know, the entire community within that one-mile corridor is looking to, to, to keep present? Because I do agree that having the signage, the Caltrans, the signage on the freeway and, and making sure that we're marketing it, but all of that comes through funds that are, you know, through the regional partners mentioned are Visit Anaheim, Anaheim Transportation Network, and all of those receive funds through the self-assessment of the Resort District. So I just want to make sure that that's something that we're keeping in mind when we're looking at this. And then I also, the beautification is a priority for, for me throughout the entire city, including especially Central and West. So Districts One, Two, Three, Four, Five, those are districts that have major beautification issues. So I am always an advocate for ensuring that we're, the city is designating enough revenue to make sure that we're maintaining that area as well. So that is something that I completely support. I also am a little concerned about changing the designation of the street because of the, I, I work with our Public Works Department pretty frequently in terms of getting stop signs and stoplights and helping with traffic slowing. And I know that it's a major, there are state laws that prohibit us from doing, doing certain things. So before we, you know, go down this path, I want to make sure that we're, I know that we're looking at all the, the right things to not make people think that we're just, this is all really great information, but I just want to make sure that we're setting expectations the way that they should be for the residents of Anaheim. And then I know the night market and a lot of these events were mentioned, and I think these are wonderful events, but I'm not necessarily sure that these are city events as much as they might be a Chamber of Commerce-sponsored event or a Visit Anaheim event. So I just want to also set expectations that these may not be necessarily city, they'll definitely be city-supported, but not necessarily city-run and operated. But those are wonderful events that should definitely be in the city of Anaheim. And I believe many of them do occur in District Three, so I just want to mention that. But that's all the comments I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz?
Thank you. Being the last one up here to, to say anything, I don't want to repeat all the comments. Just want to say that I support the, the Little Arabia designation and the ideas that you've brought forward. It's so important to have the appropriate signage and the appropriate feel to the neighborhood. As people have mentioned, they go to other areas and you, you feel like you're there. You're, when you go to Little Saigon, boy, you feel like you're in Asia and, and in, in Vietnam, not only with the food, but with the shops and the, the music and, and everything else that's going on around it. And I'm hoping that one day we'll see that along Brookhurst. Question, does that business community have an organization of businesses that you can work with, or, or are they just all separate right now?
No, there is a group of stakeholders, both commercial from various backgrounds, but also mostly from the Arabic community, that are, that are engaged, that are eager, and willing to come to the table for the advancement and improvement of the area.
Well, that's great. You're on the right start. So I certainly support it, and I'm really looking forward to visiting at a time when we have the appropriate signage and, and everything else around it, the landscaping and, and all of that. So all of you working on the project, I wish you the best. Good luck. I'll be very supportive.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions, but I wanted to start with a question for our city attorney. Because we are in the workshop format, is this something that we can give council direction on right now, or do we need to bring potential items of agreement back on next month's itemized agenda?
No specific action can be voted on. Obviously, all your comments will be taken by staff and considered, but if you want to take formal action, we'd have to re-agenda that.
Okay, thank you. I just want to, again, just echo some of my councilmembers' comments. I really appreciated the attention on safety, both for pedestrians, bikes, buses on this corridor. I was lucky enough to do the walking tour. I'm pretty fast and I barely made it across Brookhurst and that sign. So I think a lot of these slowing mechanisms and just eyes towards pedestrian and bike safety is going to be something that's going to be really help with both the safety and security of the residents, to really make this a vibrant, interactive, walking neighborhood. I would like to then ask if we could, if I cannot ask for a motion, can we agendize, at least for the next meeting, the ability to give specific council direction on some of the near-term items like the sign on the Five Freeway, potentially partnering with our community groups like the Arab American Civic Council in exploring what a type of food festival or night market would look like, as well as the initial smaller designation expansion to south of Ball, and including Little Arabia into our specific plan, because that's coming up in February. And then last, I wanted, at a, at a time when appropriate, could we get some information, either distributed to all of us or brought back, on the differences between cultural districts, business districts, enterprise zones, specific plans, what the differences are, what the path to getting those put in place is, cost associated with each one, as well as timelines?
Mayor, as part of the report, we will go ahead, right now, there is information to that effect, but we will further flesh it out. So part of what we will do is, after the, the input that's been received, we will finalize the report, make it available to, to the entire council body and the public.
Thank you. As I do echo, echo my councilmembers' comments about, you know, going through this process, but then setting it up to succeed and figuring out what the best mechanism is for this area. And, and just, I know we, we mentioned a county cultural district. What other cultural districts are in Orange County that are not associated with Brookhurst?
Sorry, Mayor, we were trying to think through this. It appears that there, our research so far is there, the three on Brookhurst.
I'm sorry. The city of Buena Park just recently adopted Little Korea. They have a Little Korea district that's recently been established in the last two months. So, but other than that, I think it's Little Saigon and, and OC Korea.
Yeah. All the more evidence about how significant and special Brookhurst is.
And Little India, the one that Councilmember Diaz mentioned, is actually in the city of Artesia, which is in the
of Artesia, which is in the county of Los Angeles. Thank you. No, I thought it was interesting when we talked about a county plan. I didn't know if there were other corridors that I just didn't know about. So thank you for clarifying that. Well, I don't think we have any other questions or comments, so with that council direction, look forward to talking to you more about some of these near steps at our next meeting.
Mayor, we're going to open public comment.
Oh, I apologize. Excuse me. I would like to open up to public comment, please. Thank you.
Mayor, we do have three speakers addressing the city council on the workshop. First speaker is Mark Richard Daniels, and the time limit is three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Welcome, Mr. Daniels.
Hello, my mayor. I was born, to be reminiscing back, at Gilbert and Ball Road, which used to be the old Garden Park Hospital. Cynthia Ward and I were both born there, but I was born years before her. And so I have a kinship to that area when I think of Brookhurst, the old Brookhurst Theater, and it was much all different in those days. And I think of, from the get-go, we should make this much like the 13 states. And I talked to Rashad way back when, and I said, "You start with the main area, which is the area, you know, Ball Road and the restaurants and all that. And then you build outward over time. You sort of add as you go, much like the colonies in the early days. And we started to add states up and down. So it will be much more, I think it'll be much more an easier lift if you just sort of build on as you go. And to also have designation, I see, for some reason, a date tree and a crescent moon kind of overlooking the, you know, as you're going down the street, the signs and, and it would be in keeping of the Middle East, which are some of the great restaurants. I feel like a falafel right now. I seriously, kebab and all, anyway, don't get me started. So I think it's one of those things, it's much overdue. It's something that should have been done years ago. And having, having grown up in West Anaheim, I've watched that grow. And other than Mama Cozes and Quarantinas, there was really nothing going on in that part of town until the Middle Eastern families and people started investing in the area. And this is much a tribute to them, because they just basically transcend and reinvented that area. And it's, it's just absolutely, the sky's the limit now. You can basically just see it in, you know, five, 10 years, you know? And also the artwork and never mind the street itself, because it's much like the resort and the area along there, where it's about the businesses and not necessarily the street itself. Thank you.
Our next speaker, if they could step forward. Beck Levine.
Good afternoon to our city council members, Mayor Atkin, Brookhurst Corridor Study presenters, and the greater Anaheim community. My name is Beck, and I am the Systems Change Advocate for the Dale MacIntosh Center for the Disabled, otherwise known as DMC. DMC is an Orange County Center for Independent Living for people with disabilities and older adults. Our mission is to promote access and equity by and for people with disabilities and older adults. DMC's offices are located along the Brookhurst corridor at Brookhurst and Crescent. I am here today representing not only the needs of disability and older adult communities, but also myself. As a resident, as an Anaheim resident living on the corner of Brookhurst and Ball, decisions made about Little Arabia directly impact me and my neighbors. I begin and end my day on one side of Little Arabia and spend most of the day, I begin and end my day on one side of Little Arabia and spend most of the rest of my day on the one side of Little, on the other side of Little Arabia at DMC's offices. I had the privilege of working with the fine folks you see present, present recommendations for Little Arabia, and have been blown away by their dedication, level-headedness, and willingness to listen and learn from the local community. Their recommendations come from a deep analysis of the factors surrounding the Brookhurst corridor, as well as learnings from the community members themselves. I myself participated not only in workgroup meetings, but also the walking tour of the corridor, which was able, which, at which I was able to point out areas of accessibility concern that affect people with disabilities and older adults attempting to navigate the corridor. Consequently, I stand by all the recommendations made for you, made before you today, and hope you will consider implementing many of them. I would be remiss if I did not mention the effect that international conflict has on this study. As a member of the Orange County Hate Prevention Network, I have learned that hate crimes and incidents motivated by Islamophobia have increased by several hundred percentage points in the past few months. Orange County Muslim residents are being attacked verbally, virtually, and physically. That is why it is vital that we do any and everything possible to protect our community and our neighbors. Financing the development of Little Arabia sends the message that hate is not tolerated in Anaheim. It also sends the message that Anaheim celebrates the many facets of its community, regardless of religion, race, gender, or other protected categories. I think it also important to mention that I am a Jewish resident of Anaheim, and as the sun sets today, we are entering the sixth night of Hanukkah. Though religiously a minor holiday, Hanukkah has soared popularity as winter holidays became more secularized. The story goes that the Maccabees overtook the Syrian army occupying Jerusalem, thus allowing them to participate, practice their religion once more in the Holy Land. Taken at face value, this story is a celebration of rebellion, but as the ReformJudaism.org points out, themes of the holiday include the refusal to submit the religious demands of an empire practicing idolatry, the struggle against assimilation to Greek culture, and loss of Jewish identity in fight for Jewish autonomy. The fight against total assimilation by dominant culture is one that we... Yes, thank you.
Heh, gue, heh, gualitutaki, nihtokan, nihtokan tekpat, nina hamesika. Thank you so much, city council, for being here and listening, and especially our brothers and sisters, you know, that are here presenting this. I think this is needed, and like Mark Daniels said, this is long overdue, and I'm happy that this is an example of how diverse we are here in Anaheim or Anahaim, out of respect. I want to respect our German brothers that came here, but before them, it was the Native American people. And we, the Indigenous Peoples' Day Committee of Hotugna, we created the Indigenous Peoples' Day Committee, along with Virginia Carmelo, tribal member. We stand under traditional lens, and we're here to stand in solidarity with our Palestinian and Middle Eastern brothers and Little Arabia. And to add with that, there is a place called Vario Logan in San Diego. When I was 13, 14 years old, a nonprofit organization would take me over there, Solivar. And it was very, very nice to find out who I was. I remember my grandpa teaching me that we were Native Americans, the Chicanos, Mexican people. We are on stolen land in 1848, Triduwalupi Hidalgo, just like in Palestine. Their land was taken away also from the Israelis or the Zionists in 1948. So I think it'd be a very beautiful thing to do, to acknowledge that, and to show, again, the diversity and show that we are not like that. We are not like the oppressors that came and stole the land and the continent. And I think this will bring a lot of revenue, city manager. I think, city council, this is the best thing we can do. And I'm glad the high school students from Anaheim High School, I graduated from Anaheim High in class of '98, and I took choir and creative writing. Always been into acting, singing, dancing. I'm a little bit of a artistic dance group. We have to go dance for Donantin Quatluique, La Verjena Guadalupe. Today's December 12th. How beautiful this day, this is happening here. But once again, thank you so much for your presentation in the workshop. I think it's very appropriate that we have this. It's good to see all my brothers and sisters here. And I just want to sing a little song. It's the people from here, and the California tribes. We had a meeting with one of the tribal members earlier, Tangwa, just down the street showing downtown Anaheim, the Indian baskets, Gabrieleno, the coyote in the river. A prayer for the human race. Heh, 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 and doa. Heh, 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 and doa. 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 Heh, and doa. Heh, and doa. Ya, hee, yo, ho. Ya, hee, yo, ho. Ya, hee, ya, hee, yo. Hmm. Ya, hee, yo, ho. Ya, hee, yo, ho. Ya, hee, ya, hee, yo. Eh, heh. That means yes, we can do this. Thank you, guys. Somatero, ho.
Hello, council. It's been a long time since I've been here. It's good to see everybody. Mayor Ashley Aiken, Carlos Jose, it's good to see everybody. My name's Ami Nash. I'm the Policy and Research Coordinator for the Arab American Civic Council. I was here last year when the Little Arabia was designated, and now it's awesome to see all the good work that DUDAC did. So thank you, DUDAC. Thank you, Sergio, for putting this presentation together. There's been, it's been really cool to engage in this activity, in this exercise, to know that our community's voices are being heard, and also that there's tangible changes and action items to be had. You know, many things that I mentioned last year was like the trees, getting the businesses involved, the possibility of forming a business coalition of some kind to help uplift the community. So I'm really, I'm really, really happy to see that these recommendations are occurring. But one thing, you know, I have always advocated for the humanity of the district. This is definitely a home and gathering place. And I wouldn't, you know, Nahla Kehali is here right now, and she's one of the main people that helped Little Arabia be. If it wasn't for her to have access right there on Brookhurst, many people want to have a chance to call Little Arabia home. In the 1980s, Little Arabia, before it even was called Little Arabia, it was actually called Little Gaza. And the reason behind that is because there's a huge refugee population from Palestine, and they came to settle here. Since Little Arabia was designated, it's actually become a gathering spot for healing, especially with these international challenges and the death that's occurring on our screens. Little Arabia has become a place where hundreds of people have come and found healing, and they've become, come to this area to find a place to where they can call home. And this is very significant for our population. Also beyond that, Little Arabia has also become a place where people can make trips and gatherings. I don't know if you guys know this, but over 90 high school students from Pasadena came to Fronnara to visit Little Arabia, to experience the Arabic culture. And beyond that, we've had night markets and everything like that occurring regularly. You know, people have been gathering, family, they've been having weddings on here. So it's become, since Little Arabia was designated, it's become a gathering spot, but it's become an important place for the community to find a place where they can heal, find a place where they can help the community. So I really appreciate everything that the city has done, and I hope that we can continue to push and think of ways to recognize the city and keep it, keep this place, because it's become really important. That's it. That's all my time. I really appreciate everything. Thank you. Also, I want to shout her out again, Nahla Kehali, she doesn't want to talk, but she's really the, you know, one of the main leaders of this. So thank you.